President.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Sadowite? Absent.
Superintendent Alvarez, would you like to discuss the tonight's agenda of the district guidance counselor position that was put forward?
Thank you, Member Castellanos. We also have Dr. Gardner, who oversees our district counseling program and counselors to answer any questions. So this position used to be a counselor that was...can you hear me?
No.
Okay, I'll just speak louder for now.
Teach her voice.
Teach her voice. So this position was originally within, and I'm not sure exactly the timeline of the years, but there was a need for this position in terms of how they had additional stipend for a one counselor at one point. And it was a significant stipend. However, the need of our early college programs has grown significantly at the high schools, as well as the number of students over the course of the last five years. And so, Dr. Gardner, if you want to elaborate on the actual job description perhaps, and also how this position would be essential to make sure that all district counselors, right, receive cohesive information and that we're supporting all students.
Yes. So in terms...
That one's not working.
Oh, it's not working.
I don't think so.
So the mics are probably working for the LCTV. They may not have a speaker.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Okay. So basically, this position is needed for a couple of reasons. We don't, we really don't have a leadership, we don't have a person identified as a designated leader of this group coming from within this group that encompasses the guidance counselor skills, who can really communicate with guidance counselors, interface with partnerships, interface with districts, advocate for systems, work with them on visioning goals, work with them on professional development and building their proficiency on platforms. And they are a really hardworking department. They meet within their departments, but there are some things that they communicate on, but they also have kind of like their own way within their schools of doing things from school to school. And what we just instituted with this school year is the MYCAP, the My Career and Academic Plan. This is happening in X blocks and other planned time periods in the middle schools and high schools. And the students are providing a lot of feedback and reflection. We're going to suddenly have a lot of data coming from students about exactly what they want to do with their future. And we are working on, at the same time, of developing career speakers and developing work-based learning opportunities. And we, at the same time, are also going to be increasing, probably by tenfold, the communication that we have with families as a result of following the MYCAP process. And I think what's really important is that students in middle school and high school, that there are expectations and there are systemized plans for communication so that it happens deliberately and it follows a plan. And that it doesn't just, the communication and the whole counseling system follows a process that is known to everyone so that students don't get uneven services or uneven communication. And I think that this person will help the group form that vision from within the group so that they can do that. Because what we really want to lift is our college-going culture. I think that we have a lot of students who want to go to college. Just as an example, we put out a survey that, it's not completed yet, but at English High School, we had 800 respondents and 600 of them said that they want to attend four-year colleges. So I think we're having a lot of desire on the part of students, and this has been mentioned before, but without a lot of robust communication and a lot of processes and cues for them to follow along the path of going to that post-secondary option, it's going to be a very uneven distribution and we're not going to have students kind of latching on to that post-secondary plan. So we feel that position is important for that reason, for the big vision of that reason. But additionally, we also have some small caseloads out there that really need some attention. So we have some students in off-campus programs, like Early College Promise, they're still under the umbrella of Lynn Public Schools. And Gateway to College students, a small number, but they're still under the umbrella. We have students, for instance, in different situations, like DYS custody, that we don't, we kind of have a missing link and we don't have someone dedicated. Like, it would really be taking someone out of their assignment for the day to go and attend to these students. And we've always been noticing that. And I think that this counselor would have a student caseload in addition to all the things that you see that we're envisioning for this person to do. So it's a long job description. And you can see there's also some collaboration with other members of my department to really make big bodies of work come to life in a way that it hasn't quite come to life in certain areas. We have been really successful in raising up a big, huge early college with 1,000 students. And I think that there's other whole bodies of work that involve a lot of communication, systematized communication, good processes, that this person would really help bring this group together across schools and help make that happen.
Any questions for us? Member Gaetley.
After I read through this, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'll use my coach's voice. After reading through this and knowing what has happened with what my son experienced at Lynn English High School, he was able to take the PSAT, he was able to take the SAT and AP courses. And there was no dropping of the ball. It was a smooth transition. But somewhere with COVID, it seems to have had a larger problem with students getting this information. And I was a teacher at the time, as you know, at Lynn English High School when my son, I was a teacher in Lynn when my son was at English. So it was difficult for me. I can only imagine how it would be for non-English speakers. So I think this is important. My one question is, on the salary that based per Lynn School Administrator Association, what does a regular counselor get?
This is based on their contract.
Oh, sorry. I didn't use this for the TV.
The same. The same.
They make the same?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And the other thing is, I was glad to hear that the caseloads that are at, the students that are not in the district, like, they belong to the district, but they have problems, that this person would bring their caseload so that they would get it. And like, if you go through with a senior at any time and you have to fill out that FAFSA and you don't have someone to like guide you a little bit, it's really difficult. I know I was fortunate because the North Shore Community College professor helped me. So I think this is a good idea. Thank you. Do you want me to take the gavel? Member Castellanos.
So I just have a logistic question. When this position was being discussed and developed, the district guidance council, did we do a comp analysis of other positions of similar roles? I know when you, are these the same as other duties, responsibilities, similar to the ones that we have in the district?
So I did, you know, look at the guidance counselor description and, you know, some of the things that I followed were, you know, basically the qualifications. But this is a little different because it's really asking this person to, that's why it's in front of you, actually, because it's not just, it couldn't be like, look like a school-based guidance counselor. It has a lot of facets to it that are about district-wide coordination.
Would we be added to the LSAA? Would it be union?
Yes. Yes.
So a bargain. Did we review, did you have a chance to talk to anyone from?
Yes, they reviewed it.
They have reviewed it with Council Howard Greenspan.
Okay. And what was the recommendation?
To move forward with it.
To us?
Yes.
Okay. And my question also is, so the position will report to Dr. Gardner, right? And what is, what would be, I think for me, like supervision, right? When you're meeting with this district guidance council, right? What are going to be some progress monitor? And how are we going to see it's an effective position? I'm not, I know for us in the high schools, and I'm familiar with that school-based piece, but not necessarily the district guidance council, because I know that, like you said, it's a different role, right? It's unique.
Right. I mean, all administrators work on their own goals that relate to their job description, that relate to the strategic plan. So what happens with all administrators is that at some point in the year, we sit down, it's usually, it is early in the year. We sit down, we create our goals, and we set like our plan. And then we meet with our supervisors, like throughout the year, to just check on our progress and talk about, and thought partner, and that's how it goes. And that's our process with all people, and that's how it would work.
And student capacity. I think there's some questions too about, like, we're getting more students, I believe, like, through the years, looking ahead. Like, what does, what does those numbers look like for, will they be managing, like, how many students? When we talk about district guidance council, what are some, I guess, like volume, trying to assess the volume, like, how much work is this person going to be, like, I don't, so if we have one district guidance counselor?
Yeah.
Are we going to be saying, wow, we need to know the couple? Like, are we, is this going to be efficient?
I would feel very lucky if I got one. And, you know, I think that the caseload is under 100 and it would, I mean, I think that this person is going to have enough time to do, you know, to go out and meet with, individually with these students and spend time and counsel these students, but then also work on all the facets of this job as well.
If I could add, Member Castellanos, I just want to make sure that we all have the vision of having a very strong guidance team across the district where the student experience from a student at English is similar to that at Classical, similar to that at, you know, FDCA is also growing into now their junior class this year and senior class the following year. We intend to bring the STEAM Academy online next year. And so as we continue to grow and have upper, you know, the nine through 12 students, we definitely want to make sure that we have a very solid nine-through-12 program. And then how does that connect to the six-through-eight programming?
Any questions from the committee? I see no further discussion. Could we?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the district guidance council.
Second.
Roll call. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. You got a roll call?
And move to the full committee.
Mary.
Move it to the full committee.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent.
Oh, I love it. With authority.
Even though there's an issue within the room, hearing-wise, for the broadcasting purposes, that's working fine. So you need to speak into your mic. Okay? And they'll resolve the issue.
Okay. They're good?
Yeah. It's broadcasting fine.
That's awesome. Should have a hard time giving that up.
I had time with that.
Ready for, ready for open mic?
Sure.
Ready?
Absolutely.
Open mic. Okay. All right. We're going to start open mic. The open mic session is designed to provide opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern to the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The community would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves a right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in Lynn Public Schools District. Having discussed their views with a student government representative, the chair reserves a right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration, attend to that member through the chair, address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence 15 minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. Anyone wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. And we will close the open mic portion of the meeting and move into the 13th regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Pena?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Present. Could all please rise if you're able to, for a salute to the flag, and remain standing if you're able for a moment of silence. Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Patrick DeCoia, retired teacher, passed away June 22, 2024. Robert Dorson, retired teacher, June 30, 2024. Rhonda Cormier, retired administrator, August 30, 2024. Eileen Reichart, retired administrator, September 2, 2024. Louis Perullo, former associate superintendent, September 4, 2024. Thank you. Next item is the minutes.
I make a motion to accept the Building and Ground Subcommittee meeting on June 27, 2024, and the 12th regular meeting on June 27, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. As have it. Appointments.
Thank you. We're really excited to announce several appointments this evening. Miki Divergilio, interim director of Fallon Elementary School, and she is with us today. Thank you. Congratulations. Laura Sanchez, executive director of Multilingual Education. Congratulations. And then we have two school nurse elections. Yanan Fritz, what is the committee's decision on that?
I make a motion to elect Yanan Fritz for school nurse.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yanan Fritz.
Member Dugan?
Yanan Fritz.
Member Gaetley?
Yanan Fritz.
Member Pena?
Yanan Fritz.
Member Reed?
Yanan Fritz.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yanan Fritz.
Thank you. The second nurse election is Lindsay Johnson. What is the, well, of the committee?
I make a motion to elect Lindsay Johnson for school nurse.
Second.
Member Castellanos?
Lindsay Johnson.
Member Dugan?
Lindsay Johnson.
Member Gaetley?
Lindsay Johnson.
Member Pena?
Lindsay Johnson.
Member Reed?
Lindsay Johnson.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Lindsay Johnson. Congratulations to all the appointments and the elections. Yeah. Congratulations. Our next item is the district strategic plan.
So this evening, we thought there was no better way to start our new school year than to actually share all of the work done by all of the stakeholders with our new district strategic plan. It is a five-year plan, and of course, it is a living document, which means we will continuously seek out feedback and continue to refine it as we go and navigate through those, that five-year period. So tonight, I want to highlight a number of slides. It is on our website and accessible to all. In your packets, you have the full version of the presentation, which we will not review all 35 slides this evening. So we're going to start by looking at, we're grounded in equity as a district that is making all of decisions for students based on our mission of equity, and what does that mean? It means that we've arrived at a common definition of equity, ensuring that all students have the, what they need to access learning and access curriculum based on their individual needs. It is not a one-size-fits-all education. And so that is to make sure that when we did this work and we started to look at the teams, they consciously reflected on how individuals identify the impact of our work in building and structured opportunities and identifying and interrupting when necessary the ways in which individual mindsets, biases, and prior experiences may help or harm our pursuit of equity. And so that means we are really working together to push each other, to ensure that we're asking each other those critical questions whenever there is a student that needs a different model to ensure their learning. And so that means that we're designing at the margins. It means we're creating systems that prioritize equitable process and outcomes for systematically marginalized communities, knowing that the systems will more effectively serve all students. We're also making sure that we're sharing seating and sharing power, that we're explicitly bringing to the table those who have traditionally been excluded from decision-making processes and center their voice in the pursuit of equitable outcome for all students. That includes our students on an ongoing basis, not just during focus groups for the development of the district strategic plan. And then also making the invisible visible, which means we explicitly name the assumptions, the values, and the context in which our perspectives and recommendations are grounded. We share information transparently and cultivate decision-making practices that prioritize inclusivity and equity. So we have collectively acknowledged the past, we understand the present, and we are designing for the future to meet student needs. So in the design of this program, this plan, and we looked at a multi-year strategic plan that identifies a long-term intended impact of goals and priority work needed to achieve the goals. And so the theory of action for LPS is, we're going to go from left to right, starting with, if we strengthen the instructional core, ensuring both cultural and linguistic responsiveness, then we will, and so we're looking at the green in the middle. So if, I'm going to just go straight down the left side. If we ensure that LPS educators are diverse, highly qualified, well-resourced, and supported to serve LPS students, if we ensure, we increase equitable access to innovative school models and programs and advanced coursework, and we do that in the context of establishing a sense of inclusion and belonging among LPS staff, students, and families with cultural and linguistic responsiveness, and establishing a culture and sustained practice of shared accountability for student outcomes, then by 2029, all LPS students will grow intellectually, vocationally, academically, socially, and emotionally in the learning environments where both equity and excellence are valued, expected, and supported. Specifically, LPS students will possess the academic skills to be globally competitive by meeting and exceeding grade-level expectations in reading, math, science, and social studies, possess the communication by literacy, multilingualism, and social-emotional skills to be globally competitive, have access to and experience success in a wide range of advanced coursework that prepares them to navigate a rapidly changing world. Along with families and staff, experience the district and their schools as places of inclusion and belonging, and close equity gaps in access and achievement for students who are today furthest from opportunity. And so that takes us over to that last block, where we know that LPS graduates are critical thinkers, problem solvers, engaged community members with global mindsets, effective communicators and leaders, and continuous learners empowered to design their own paths. So that takes us from the if-we-do, right, statement through how do we know that we're making the progress, and ultimately to the LPS graduate with mindsets that have skills, experiences necessary to define and achieve success on their own terms. So the strategic plan is a reflection of the vision, aspirations, and guidance of a number of dedicated stakeholders. So in this multi-faceted process over the course of several months, the teams, we had strategic plan, plan, project leads. There were families and caregivers. There were school visits, including classroom observations. There was a committee, a community steering committee of principals, teachers, district leaders, and partners. There were principal and teacher interview and focus groups. There was district and community surveys with more than 1,500 responses. There was also a five cross-functional working team of school-based teachers and staff and central office staff. There were community partners in those interviews and focus groups. And then the superintendent's cabinets also gave observation and feedback that was the elementary teachers, secondary teachers, and student advisors, which are 10 high school students. And then the executive leadership team also, as well as the school committee members, and any updates during the public school committee meetings. So the strategic plan begins with the intended impact goals, which we seek as a district to achieve by the end of a five-year plan. And so our impact goals are the ones that I reviewed just a moment ago. They are five bullets, and they're restated here. And we are saying again that by 2029, all LPS students will grow intellectually, vocationally, academically, socially, and emotionally in learning environments where both equity and excellence are valued, expected, and supported. And that takes us to, how does this, how does this five-year process actually work? So when we look at a five-year process, and then we break that down into annual district-wide goals and initiatives, and then annual department goals and plans, and then annual school goals and plans, we have the strategic alignment that we are seeking in making sure that we have a cycle where, where you look on the right-hand side, you'll see the annual planning cycle, where we set annual targets that represent progress towards those five-year goals. We develop district-level priority-aligned initiatives to achieve the annual targets and align those resources. We develop initiative-aligned department and school plan goals. And then we step back to reflect on achievements and setbacks. And then we realign and we start the process all over again. start the process all over again. And so this is the executive summary that was developed based on all of the stakeholder feedback, which has our vision, our portrait of a graduate, over the five years, what we hope to accomplish, what we know we will accomplish, our strengths and opportunities, the measure of success, and then where the strategic priorities lie. And if you look at that blue box on the very bottom at the end of this actual document, it says proudly serving 17,000, it's actually 17,220 students as of the beginning of this week, who bring diverse racial, ethnic, cultural, and linguistic assets to our Lynn community. And so again, this was, we want to thank publicly all of the stakeholders, our teachers, staff, parents, community members, the school committee, all of our community business member partners that engaged in this process over the course of several months to develop these goals. And so we are already working with our departments to develop initiatives under each of those indicators so that we have a method to actually not only have a plan, but to progress monitor each initiative under each indicator and set measurable objectives for each year to ensure that we meet those goals. And I will take any questions that you may have at this time.
Eric Castellanos, Member Reed.
Thank you, Dr. Alvarez. My first question is really more of a, so for the, you said this district, this this strategic plan is a reflection of the vision, aspiration, and guidance of numerous dedicated stakeholders.
Yes.
My question is around the the numbers on district and community survey with, it says 1,500 plus. It seems a little low. Like, I don't know if like, are those, I don't know if those, also, I don't know if those are available for review, those responses.
I believe we can release them at this point.
Yeah.
They're anonymous, but we can release them at this point.
Yeah, it'd be nice to just, I think it'd be nice if we could, I know that's a lot, but I don't mind if we could get on the e-doc. Be nice to just review those. Let me get back. The strategic priorities that you have listed, so the framework that we're that we're looking at right now, and we're still, it's still, it's alive, it's active, I believe, right? So you guys still going to go back and obviously, as the quarters progress, the strategic priorities, I'm actually, how do I put this? Is there flexibility to adjust, like adapt? Right? When I look at this document, are we able to adapt with certain challenges and barriers that we're looking at?
Absolutely. Absolutely. The whole point is that we're, we continue to work with all of those stakeholders so that we can adapt because what are, what this year may not look like next year and the year after. So we want to make sure that this is always a document that we can modify as we meet goals or surpass the goals and the expectations that we set for ourselves each year.
What was different from the last strategic plan to this one, the process?
I don't know that the process of developing was different. I believe that was the same. I can't, I know that there was an actual, all of the stakeholders met. There was input from all of the the same groups. I think what was different was there wasn't, in terms of what happened with the last district strategic plan, there was an interruption, obviously, of almost two years. So there was an interruption in data and progress monitoring because while students were and teachers, we were, everyone was online, the data collection piece was certainly interrupted.
That's why I asked that question, because I'm not going to say the pandemic is going to happen again, but I just, like, I don't think we were prepared for that. So we lost lots of rich data and obviously the initiatives that we had on the table.
So that document was used in the development of this process to ensure that some of those targets that were not met or addressed fully because of the interruption were also embedded into this document.
Well, that was when I reviewed it. That's why I was asking. That's why when I was looking at both, because we were still in transitions, right? We're still working on goals from that time that weren't really completed or weren't going to be completed, right? I guess, how do we prioritize, right? How do we prioritize the different adjustments or cuts? I don't want to say cuts, but like, there were, because I could notice the difference. There were some initiatives were cut, and I don't know why, right? I don't see the rationale in this document. Could you highlight some of those priorities and how we kind of shift it?
Sure. Maybe Deb and Molly, you want to share a little bit?
Thank you for the question. So it wasn't, we didn't start the project by comparing and contrasting the two documents. We started a new process of looking at our data and looking at the students and families and community members in front of us. We had several steering committees, steering committee meetings to also guide the process, and we already have a steering committee meeting on the agenda for this fall to review again where we are. So in regards to the priorities that were set here, they're really set in the context of where we are post-pandemic. You'll notice that the, in the first district strategic plan, equity was a touch point, but it wasn't embedded in the way that it is here. And, you know, I have to speak to the the reality that the company with whom we contracted, Bellwether, is an organization led by a woman of color, which helped in terms of making sure that the equity piece that we rose ourselves was carried as a through line. And so we had a lot of conversations in the focus groups and in the lead project meetings to ensure that we were really elevating that because the city sits separately from other cities in regards to what we're experiencing in terms of how quickly our diversity is growing and becoming more and more multicultural. And so we wanted to ensure that we really elevated that in a way that the first district plan didn't. I would also say that when we first set the the other district plan, it was 2019, 2020 when we started to implement, right? So it was 2018, 2019 when we went through the process, and then 2019, 2020. And so at that stage, when you first start with a district plan that first year, a lot of it is setting your goals. It's still setting the goals themselves. So we have the priority areas globally, but now we have to actually set the measures based on the data that we have right now. And we have already started that work as well. And finally, and then I'll stop taking the microphone, but finally, you'll see that this has been a progression from the work that we did last year already. And so we're carrying the goals that, the five goals that we had last year, we are still carrying into this year as well, while we set the the priority areas here too. So like, there is a an overlap of some of those goals, and that's why we've broken them down into the initiatives. So which is something that we didn't, it's a very hefty strategic plan, but you'll see in each of the priority areas, there's like A through F or A through D in terms of specific initiatives that we want to pursue.
To support that priority area.
Mm-hmm.
So, and that was certainly different from the last strategic plan because to Deputy Cohen's point, where I think what needs to be stressed is that because the beginning of that last plan is when everyone was interrupted, there wasn't a full development of some of those goals. And all of that data was not captured for the entire time that we were in the plan through the end of last year. So certainly, the initiatives, the way they're going to be developed now looks very different from what happened, right, four years ago. So if you look at slide 29, for instance, which is strategic priority one, and it says strengthen the instructional core, ensuring both cultural and linguistic responsiveness. And then you'll see she just referenced initiative 1A. So what are those initiatives? 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, and 1F. So if we look at establish and codify a district-wide vision for instruction, right, we're doing that through the alignment of how we have now a chief academic officer, how MLE lives under, right, to for L students to access curriculum with accommodations, not live separately from academics. For special education is also integrated because we're giving students accommodations and access, right, modifications to access curriculum, not separate from academics and tier-one instruction. So for each of these plans, there's a whole development, a team developing now an action plan that has a number of steps with the metrics and paced out for like, this is what in our, that our new data department, right, is supporting the projection of what should those percentages look like based on our academic data for year one, for year two, for year three, for year four, and year five. And of course, those will be adjusted based on, again, if we meet or exceed our goals in a specific year, then of course, we're going to say we want to increase the number of students that are achieving or proficient mastery on grade level. So we keep moving the target based on the achievement goals that we're setting for ourselves. So that's just one example of what would happen under one initiative.
Those SMAR goals too?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Smart E goals with the E.
You know what?
With the equity.
There is, there is.
With the equity piece.
I'm old now.
And our teachers are experts at that.
You know, I'm daddy now, so I'm a little old. So, you know, things are changing now. Smarty.
Thank you. Member Reed, then Member Pena.
I think you touched on this a couple times, and I think Molly did too. Just for my own brain, how it works, could you just give me like a concrete example of sort of how this would look, starting with the impact goals, going down to like an indicator? Like, could you just give an example of that?
Sure. So, so let's take.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's not. We've already started some of this work with the department. So basically, we take a cycle of like plan, do, study, act, right? And what we do is we look at what's the data tell us now where we currently are at. Then we would cycle that into where, what's the end goal, right? What is the metric? And, and then we would then develop steps of, based on the root cause analysis of why haven't we met this goal? Or if we've met the goal, where are we currently measured at? Again, in comparison to other districts. And then we would set all those steps. What are the aligned resources that we need? Because that's extremely important, right? We can't say like, here are all the steps we're going to have, and then we don't have resources to align with those steps. And then principals and teachers can't actually fulfill those steps with students and schools. And then when we do the progress monitoring piece, we do like quarterly progress, which curriculum and instruction is currently working on, right? How do they upload those assessments? And what are we looking for assessments across the district for standards that are tested so that teachers can go back and easily reteach? And it's not like we're guessing where we're going to land on MCAS. You know, it, this is the the science, right, of how we actually look at some of those standards and the learning, the teaching and learning that needs to happen in between. And then once we do the progress monitoring, and we're able to get to like, how do we, once we have an assessment that tells us clearly where we are, then how do we realign in that plan, do, study, act cycle to say, okay, now we can move on from this, right? What's the next phase of this plan development that we need to develop, that we need to create for students?
Yeah, no, definitely makes sense. And just, so is this, is this something that will be, as a school committee, or will be able to see or review?
Oh, absolutely. It'll be public, and it'll be shared with everyone.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Eric Pena.
Thank you. Welcome back, Dr. Alvarez, everyone. Thank you. I was looking at, I like the fact that you have a superintendent's cabinet. You have elementary teachers, secondary teachers, student advisors. Have you considered having parent engagement at that? Maybe I'm adding some PTOs to get a little more.
We, we have spoken to actually one parent that's interested in developing, like, really putting emphasis on a district-wide PTO. We have been working to see how we can implement that based on the 27 schools that we have and quickly growing. So, so yeah, definitely we're, we are looking at how we are going to implement a body of parents that could speak to district-wide needs, not just their specific school where their their children, students attend.
I'm pretty sure there's many leaders around the city that want to step up to that.
Sure.
It'd be nice to get some parent engagement.
Absolutely. Thank you for that feedback.
Any other questions? All right. Yep, Member Gailey.
I just want to thank you, all of you, for putting out this plan and doing the research that we need so that we know where the gaps are, we know how to fill those gaps, and we will hopefully see student achievement gaps. It's not just the MCAS, it's the actual student achievement. It's the confidence that student will build. It's the feelings that teachers will have as they move forward and see their children in front of them, the students, like succeeding. So I'm just looking forward to this rollout, and I know it's going to be an ever-changing document. I understand that, and it's going to be backed by data, and we'll know where people are. So thank you very much for all your hard effort and work.
Can I just add that, like, the the ever-changing document, like, that's real, right?
Yes.
I mean, any good plan, if you don't reflect and look at, is it working? Okay, it's working. What's our next target? Or is it not working? Well, let's evaluate what we're doing, and let's regroup and come up with a different strategy. If you didn't have that, your plan just sits there, right? And and your kids stay stagnant. So our schools do that with their school improvement planning. The district strategic plan is no different. So just know that, like, that's part of the process.
Yeah, and what I truly like is it is all-inclusive. So teachers are represented, represented, principals are represented, administrators are principals, administrators are, unions are part of it. So I'm like, hopeful. I'm very hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I also just want to thank the team that worked on the plan, as well as the, you know, hundreds of folks that, with the students and the educators and the community members, everybody for for sharing your thoughts. And we will certainly, as we heard, be very much continuing this conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a request to accept miscellaneous donations of checks totaling $1,400 to Skills USA.
The recommendation is to accept the donations totaling $1,400 to Skills USA.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation?
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Next is a vote to approve additional proprietary items for the new pickering at middle school.
Thank you. And there is a letter in your folder regarding what items these are. We've discussed this on a number of the meetings. And back in the spring, we also shared that this would be a request going forward based on making sure that all of our district schools had similar equipment in a number of areas, audio, security. And so there is a list on page two of what those actual systems would be. And Deputy Rorero?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, I mean, it's the Verkata security system that we're upgrading, the audio enhancement system that our classrooms have to enhance the audio in the room. That is standard equipment that we want across all of our classrooms and spaces. So the new pickering, we want it no different. And then it's the only equipment that can be used to maintain this consistency, and therefore, we're requesting to, you know, say it's a proprietary product that we need to have for this school. So you approving this allows that to happen. I also just wanted to note that you have an update of MSBA, the project, and where we're at, just for your own information.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thank you.
Request to transfer funds from salary to non-salary to provide services to special education students for vision, hearing, and speech therapy.
Thank you. Um, so the recommendation this evening is, uh, for school committee to allow us to have a transfer of funds for special education salary accounts to contract services, non-salary accounts to provide services for, um, our special needs students. And the rationale, um, is due to the lack of applications for our vision, hearing, and speech therapist, special education, uh, will not have enough staff to provide the required services to students. Um, therefore, we would need to hire outside contractors to provide these services. So, uh, I'm requesting that you allow for this recommendation, um, to be approved.
Questions, yeah. Member Reed, member Castellanos.
Dr. Calala, would you want to?
No.
Also, thank you.
So the, the non, the non-salary, that, that, that includes things like contractors?
Yeah, it would be contracts, so they're not full-time staff.
Okay.
And they don't have benefits, correct?
Thank you.
I, member Castellanos, was that your question too, or did you have another question?
Um, kind of, yeah. I, I kind of, what, what's the, the figure? What's the number on that? Like, what's the...
How much?
$350,000.
Okay.
So would these positions continue to be open postings, or are we closing the postings for the positions that aren't filled?
No, once it's moved out of personnel for full-time, they would be closed for this year.
Okay.
Um, in discussing this, also with, um, L T U, we anticipate that we'll have conversations during negotiations to really look at what these salaries should be set to going forward so that we can hire our full-time staff. Um, I think, you know, one of the recurring themes has been that the salaries that we're, um, offering are below the average salary of a, of one of these positions. Therefore, we're not, we've, we've had a number of vacancies, um, for two years, Dr. Calala. It's been two years in some of these positions.
Yes, absolutely.
And some more.
And some more. Yes. So, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, member Gailey hasn't gone yet, and then member Castellanos, yep.
So I just wanted to make sure it was not going to, it's like a temporary fix until we find them. I just want to make certain that, um, it's temporary. Um, but you just told me it was going to be closed for this year, but reopened in the spring.
That is correct, and perhaps maybe the motion should say to transfer for this school year for, you know, S Y twenty-five? Um, because that is our commitment is to, when we go to renegotiate, that we are looking at what those salaries should be.
Okay, and Dr. Calala, I'd like to ask you, um, this has been painful for a lot of people in our city, and how are we doing with the hiring? Have we found people to fill those slots through this?
You mean for these positions?
Yes, through this process.
So with the contracted agencies, yes, we are able to fill them. We should, within the next two weeks, be completely staffed.
So all the staff out there that are the, um, vision, hearing, or speech staff that are overburdened with more students than they can actually service, we'll have a break.
We, we should be, we should be staffed in all of the buildings, yes.
Thank you very much. Doing a great job, Chris, Dr. Calala.
Yeah, member Pena.
And that's just going to be till fiscal year twenty-five, right?
Correct, correct.
And we'll revisit it.
Well, yeah, it'll be, it'll, this is just for this budget, so it'll...
This budget, yeah.
Well, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, the $350,000, those projections, is that going to be enough to cover the estimated costs, or?
It's close.
Could you talk about that? That's why I kind of, could you give us a little bit more?
Yeah, we're still just trying to figure out, like, you know, we, we have a few part-time people that are available through the agencies, and some of the rates vary depending on what the certification is exactly. So, um, we're still finalizing those numbers, but we should be, um, you know, close to this range.
Kevin, uh, yeah, I was gonna...
Those were the salaries, that number is the salaries of the positions that we couldn't fill.
Yep.
So we're moving from the salary to the non-salary, so that was that, that's where that dollar amount comes from. Should that be a problem down the road, we would have to readdress it. If we needed additional funds, we'd have to come back if we had to do another transfer.
All right, that's why I was, because when we talk about the, you break down the rates, you get more, you know, more expensive, so I just wanted to just read, just check that, yeah, so, okay.
We just took the positions that we couldn't fill.
Yep.
I took the salary amounts at a month.
Reallocated.
That's where we got that dollar value, and we're transferring it over to the contracted services.
Member Reed, member Gailey.
Do these, I guess some complicated math, but so what we're paying these, is this roughly what we'd pay?
Hmm, no.
Someone who's...
Not necessarily.
I know it's hourly, but is it more expensive?
When you hire a contracted service person, usually there's a, there's a, obviously the person, there's a rate from the company.
Right.
Because, you know, but when, we're also, I mean, we don't have it in our budget, but we're technically saving on, you know, s- uh, your health insurance.
Right, right.
And some retirement and all those other items, which unfortunately aren't in our budget, but...
I got you.
They pay a higher rate per day or per hour, however, they're going to bill us so.
Yeah.
But, you know, which...
Got to do what you gotta do.
...will cover it.
Yeah.
You know, that's what we're trying to get to.
I get it.
There was certainly no benefits, right?
But let's just keep an order, sorry, yeah. Yeah, member Gailey and then member Pena.
So, Mr. McHugh, that was my question. What about the benefits? If this is, um, the amount from just the positions that weren't filled, we're not using money, that's their salary, we're not using the monies for the health benefits or their other benefits. So we could actually have more money?
Those aren't in my, our budget, those were in the city budget.
Oh, okay.
So I can't count them.
Yeah, and, and whatever is saved on the benefits for L P S employees is therefore not counted towards net school spending, and so it'll event, it'll still go towards the schools. Um, it just wouldn't be on that item, line item.
Thank you.
What's the will of the committee?
Motion approved.
Uh, make a motion to transfer funds from salary to non-salary to provide special services to special ed students for vision, hearing, and speech therapy.
Put the amount to that, please.
That's my twenty-five. Yep. Mention the dollar amount.
Yeah.
Do with friendly, just the dollar amount, $350,000.
Oh, for $350,000. Thank you, Mr. Dugan.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thanks for everyone, for your work on this, and, and, you know, for all the hard work of the, um, therapists that are making do with the situation. I know we all are looking forward, trying to come up with a long-term solution here, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, next item is a vote to cancel the sixteenth regular school committing, meeting on October thirty-first, the eighteenth regular on November twenty-eighth, and the twentieth regular on December twenty-sixth for Halloween, Thanksgiving, and, and the Christmas break. And then, let's take that vote, and then, I know we want to talk about scheduling for that special meeting, so we want to start with that.
I make a motion to cancel the October thirty-first meeting, the November twenty-eighth meeting, and the December twenty-sixth meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Um, so the administration had proposed rescheduling the October meeting to, just to make sure we were keeping everything moving along.
Correct.
Um, and I know at least one of the members had a conflict on that date that had reached out to me. Um, and so I think the, we wanted to ask if the, if folks could do the twenty-ninth, which is the Tuesday of that week?
October.
Yeah, October.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, works me.
Yep.
So it'll be the twenty-ninth?
October twenty-ninth would be the, in lieu of the sixteenth regular meeting.
Yeah.
Would be a special meeting and no longer a regular meeting, so, why you're a special meeting.
It's a Tuesday.
Is that good?
That's perfect, thank you.
Okay, all right, let's, do we need a motion then?
Oh, a motion, um, to hold a special meeting on October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four, and in lieu of October thirty-first.
Great.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hi, Saturday.
Love you guys.
Thank you. Uh, any votes taken in the policy subcommittee meeting on September tenth?
Okay, yeah, so, uh, thank you, Mayor Nicholson. We did have quite a few. Um, I think some of them I can group together, some of them I'll have to do separately, but this first one definitely needs to be separate. Uh, so on Tuesday, we had talked about, uh, the L V T I admission, and we made a few tweaks to it, nothing major, but a few tweaks to the L V T I mission, admissions. So, uh, that first motion was to, uh, accept the new admission policy for L V T I.
Great. Does, um, do the administration want to say like a brief word as to summarize what that changed?
Yeah, I would think there's going to be some public, yeah.
So the change reflects, uh, the admissions, um, holding the admissions instead of, uh, to inform families in May, in March, uh, because there's not any applications between March and May. Um, therefore, no reason to delay notifying families, and that way, then we can focus on any new move-in families, um, who would be eligible to apply, um, and be held to the same, um, standards as, uh, regular application period.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. All right, uh, so looking at my notes, I think I, maybe it probably would be best to do all these separate, so bear with me here.
The first one, we did make a few amendments to J R A student records. Um, again, a lot of this is kind of, uh, technical things, nothing super major, but I will field questions if anybody has any about that. Okay, so that was moved to the full committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right, next one is B B B E, the unexpired term fulfillment. Um, and basically, what we did with this was just, uh, go to the city charter, uh, rather than have it in the school committee policy, is just refer to the city charter on something like this. Um, so that was another motion that was put to the full committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right, and then the next couple have to do with Title IX. Uh, the current administration in the White House did make some tweaks to Title IX. Attorney Gallo, um, came to us in the policy subcommittee, and just some wording with some of these things that need to be changed. So I am going to group a few of these together. The first one is A C, policy A C A, nondiscrimination on basis of sex. Policy A C, which is a non, another nondiscrimination policy. Um, the A C A B, sexual harassment, sexual and sex-based harassment and retaliation. Um, and then, so those are, would, I would group together, and again, those are all based on new federal, uh, standards that have come out, uh, because, uh, again, Title IX has been changed just a bit. So our wording needed to kind of reflect the new changes with Title IX, so those are all put forward. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right, again, bear with me, I'm sorry. The next one is, again, because of these that we tweaked a bit, we have a policy in our current manual that we're hoping to eliminate that involves harassment, but because of the tweaks that we made, uh, we will no longer need that one. So again, that was put forward to the full committee. So again, the motion would need, would be to eliminate our current harassment policy.
Second.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Okay, and this is the final one. Um, so this next one would give the superintendent or her designees the authority to change our policies based on grammar errors, uh, different, uh, pronoun or verbiage, or things that they, uh, would feel would be important to just kind of clean up our policies a bit. Uh, so it gives our, our super, a little more power there. Uh, doesn't necessarily take power from us, though, because, uh, she would then need to come to us and just, you know, let us know what was changed, and we would need to approve those changes. But, uh, rather than calling policy subcommittee meetings, uh, Dr. Alvarez would have the authority to kind of change those minor tweaks, uh, that we would need to update. And that was the final one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And that was that. So we did have quite a busy Tuesday, but I think that's that.
It was fun.
It was fun. Always is.
Thank you. Thank you. Is it, there's no communication information?
No, only during the last meeting.
Okay. Before we adjourn for executive session, that's the next item, right?
Personnel.
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 Oh, yeah, okay. Personnel, sorry. Were there, any more second on personnel?
Last two.
Thank you.
Yes, so we, we made a motion to push the district-wide council position forward to the committee of the whole. And I'd like to make a motion to, before, if folks have discussion, any discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the position of district councillor.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Great. Next is executive session. That's the last item. And we will vote to go into executive session in a minute. I just want to take a minute to, to thank everyone who helped us set up this new facility here, and their new environment for the school committee meeting. As you all know, the reasoning for that was the opening of classrooms in the 4th floor of Benet Street, which we are thrilled about. And just want to remind you all that we are doing official ribbon cutting tomorrow at 2:00 PM, and, and hope everyone can join. I can't wait for that. And just, you know, really excited about all the work that went into that and, and that everybody's doing to move that forward. So, thank you all.
Yeah, and we, we took the Pickering proprietary items vote, which is exciting stuff for, there's a school building committee next week. And also importantly, for the general public, is our groundbreaking on Friday, will be from tomorrow, which is, I think, going to be a really special moment for, for all of us here and for this community. So, thank you everyone for helping us get ready for that. Really, really exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Man.
Thank you. All right. Can we get a motion for executive session, please?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
And then just, you gotta state, yeah.
Can I do them both, or?
Yeah, you can read them both.
Make a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to Lynn School Administrators Association. And then make a motion to go into executive session also for contract negotiation with non-union personnel deputy superintendents.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Country regular session?
Second.
Roll call, please.